My pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite in justice and all.
Okay, first thing on the agenda tonight is we got Hartley here from La Bella. He's gonna finish up the linchpin on the DRI.
Do you want to do the DRI stuff first? Or do you want...
The neighborhood plan is what Hartley is here for. The Trinity Forest, Shady Ave neighborhood plan is what Hartley is gonna put that on.
But that's part of the DRI.
It essentially is. I can do an update on that.
Do you want to provide that context first, or do you want to...
Sure, I can do some opening on that. We are working with the IDA, so Naturally Lewis, on finishing up the draft to have to all of you and our committee that we had set up, hopefully in the next day or two. We're putting the finishing touches on the draft now. We have a substantial list of projects, about 20-plus million dollars' worth of projects, which is a really good sign. And still to come, we actually, I was just letting Hartley know that there's a potential developer that had contacted Mayor Beagle, and had contacted my office, and has contacted Naturally Lewis, because they're interested in developing in the area that we've been working on your neighborhood plan for, which is the point of this neighborhood plan, right? Is to showcase the development opportunities and really give the residents their, a voice to show what they want and to showcase the area. So if anything positive had come out of this before it was even up for your adoption, that would be it. So, like I said, we had a couple bigger projects that we're looking to fold into the draft before we finalize that and send it off to you. But it's looking really exciting. There's a lot of great downtown brick block projects that are pretty exciting, that bring housing and revitalization and facade improvements to the downtown area, and then really exciting projects like Hartley will be showcasing with your Trinity Forest and Shady Ave visioning and neighborhood planning. So, like I said, in the next day or two, we hope to have a draft up to you. We will be reconvening the DRI committee, which includes Mayor Beagle, Tim Woodrick, I believe Dan was set to come to the last one. And then a collaboration of the education and healthcare representation and local businesses. So, really exciting application this year. We're very optimistic about it, and we have been working with Paul on some of the public infrastructure projects to freshen those up. But lots of movement, and this is part of that, which is why Hartley's here. She was at on the findings. The state has a plan that act process that they're really pushing and advocating for, which this plays right into, right? So we're planning, we're working with the communities to get their feedback and to really put it onto paper and to showcase their visions. And we're showing the state that we've done that, and that you've done that to properly plan for what development should go where.
Yeah.
So she's gonna, I'm gonna give you an update on it.
Thanks, Cassie. I'm gonna stand up just because it's easier for me to keep my focuses on my thoughts. But again, I'm Hartley Bonnison Schweitzer. I'm a senior planner with La Bella Associates, and I've been working with Cassie and her team, as well as the village, and then with Naturally Lewis on kind of formalizing this plan, doing the kind of data analysis behind the scenes to ground truth the data so we make sure that the recommendations that we're proposing are realistic and tangible for the village. So as a point of context, like Cassie said, we started talking about this project in June, and I believe you spoke with this board at that point, saying, hey, we're going to embark on endeavor to better understand this microneighborhood that you'll see on kind of page two of the plan. Really showcases the parcels that we wanted to cover, which is why you're gonna see focus areas on this. Really kind of jumping in on the Farmer's Co-op shift away from the village properties, as well as the La Bella Food Pantry building and the vacant parcel. That's kind of, you know, a long trendy. Kind of seeing some synergies along with the potential future of the rail trail project. This obviously cuts right along that rail line. So we felt that this neighborhood was particularly ripe for redevelopment, ripe for re-visioning. Cassie's team did a survey analysis from the residents to understand their interest and vision for the community. And one of the big concerns that residents had was blighted property use and kind of lack of investment in that section. They wanted better lighting, more walkable community. They kind of just wanted to really bring some life and quality community living back into that area. So a lot of our kind of guidelines and vision were to see how that would be possible, what would that look like. So you'll see on page two through, I think, page three, we really kind of went through the overview of why now, why here. I always like to write reports as if I'm not in the room when you're reviewing it, and nobody is here, and you find this report somewhere and you say, what happened here? So you can understand the context, why we're doing this, why now. And again, like I said, I really feel this is an interesting time, along with the DRI visioning process, that this could be a really compelling component of the village's application. Particularly in light of the proposed vacancies for some of those buildings. On page four, we went through, like I said, we pulled the North American Industry Classification System data, and that's a system or the analysis of where are the growth markets and where are the declining centers for the Village of La Bella, understanding that that's also the county seat and really where the Village of La Bella is going. The broader county is moving in that direction. And you see no big surprises here. You have some growth sectors in the wholesale trade, transportation, warehousing, arts, entertainment, recreation. We're becoming a culture that wants to have an experience, right? We're going out to places, we want a destination of an activity. And you see that in a lot of the data across all kinds of the younger generations, who really want to have an experience, right? Combination and food services aligned with that?
Can I ask...
Sure.
What is on your page four? Down in the bottom corner, where under 2018, 20, the red.
Yes.
Is that supposed to mean negative?
Yes. That means those industries are in a decline, and the changes...
I guess one reason I question that one is you got healthcare and social systems. It's like this decline, 13th and the hospitals just spending millions to upgrade the surgical wingout and all their... So I'm just wondering how come that one was in a decline?
So, this is in a 2018 to 2028 projected change. So they're saying in a larger view of some of these issues, there might be some consolidation of services. There might be, you know, in general speaking, healthcare is a particularly volatile industry right now. Lots of changes and consolidations and shifts within that market. So this data analysis is predicting a bit of a decline. Now you see, it's the least of the declines of anything. The biggest one is utilities and mining, quarrying, gas extraction. I mean, that's, I think, tracks with the industry changes too. But this is really forward-looking. And again, these aren't hard numbers. This is just what they're anticipating with looking at the data, looking at the industries as a whole, and then looking at the geographic region that we're covering. So I think it's a valid point. However, I think, you know, that's, as we're seeing, healthcare as an industry is shifting.
But you wouldn't think utilities would drop either with all the solar wind that's going on around.
Well, you know, the challenge for that is that's, those are temporary jobs. You know, primarily the jobs focused around those are construction, and that can be categorized in the line 23 construction. So the jobs under utilities are really, who are the people that are working in that industry full-time? And you're not going to see as, you know, as we've seen, they do create a lot of wonderful temporary jobs, but they're not often full-time, you know, establishing 50 people per facility in that renewable way. You know, in more traditional, you had more people at those plants because it was more of a labor-intensive endeavor. These renewable energy systems have less people that need to be operating on a day-to-day level. These are just kind of guideposts. I think this is a good discussion to say, this is anticipation, this is future-looking, this is using data that industry uses, that developers use. And we want to look at what the developers are looking at, right? Because we can then better understand their decisions and better create an environment that they want to work in. So if we're looking at this and saying, okay, people want, we're gonna have 189% growth in arts, entertainment, and recreation in the Village of La Bella. Because that's like I said, we're shifting into a culture and community that people want to have these experiences and they're willing to pay for them. So, you know, let's have the village become a destination. And that was kind of the vision for this microneighborhood, saying, let's create a hub of activities, of residential living, of the sort of things that people want to go to to visit, you know, have a bunch of shops, drink after, maybe go to a couple gift shops, that kind of experience. As we see, there's some cross-sector synergies along with that arts, entertainment, recreation, accommodation and food services, those seem very interlinked, as well as some professional scientific and technical trades could work with some of that wholesale trade in construction, right? There's some opportunities there for office jobs and other opportunities that you could kind of leverage some of this development for. So, good information to have as guideposts, and this is what we use to kind of make the recommendations on the individual parcels. That's for the commercial side. And for the housing side, we looked at, we used software called Envision Tomorrow, which does something similar for housing trends and analysis. And again, this is all forward projections based on proprietary software that the industry looks at, right? When a developer is coming to build housing, they're not just building because they think it's a good idea. They're looking at the market parameters, they're looking at better understanding the trends and what types of housing people want to live in, and where they want to live. And, you know, this should cause no surprise to anybody at this point, but, you know, the data predicts that the people in the village are going to be older as we go through. There's an aging population, which tracks with a reduction in the number of household members, right? You know, if your kids are grown up and they're not living at home anymore, then your household number is going to be smaller. You know, you're really not seeing, so you're seeing a lot of housing that's going to start catering towards seniors. And that could, that's not necessarily senior living or senior homes. This is smaller units, this is less outdoor maintenance of your property. You know, that is something that could appeal to across populations, but would particularly be appealing to somebody who maybe wants lower maintenance and smaller, less people there at home. So keeping that in mind, when we look at any type of development, we want to be tracking what the population is doing, right, and what they might want. And we see from the housing analysis that Lewis County did a few years ago that there's really not a lot of senior housing for, you know, that fits those parameters within the county. The waitlists are along the two affordable, or two housing senior living areas. So we know that could be a desire here. We're also seeing kind of related to that, but not quite, is that there's going to be a slight increase in renter population. You know, there's a market shift that's happening nationally that is touching the village here a little bit. People are more okay not owning a home. People are not looking to that being the end goal, what they want to do and where they want to put their investments. You know, so let's figure out a way to cater to that in a way that provides quality, safe housing, you know, that is desirable. So with all of that in mind, based on those marketing, we really say, you know, hey, look at senior housing, affordable rentals, and quality ownership, because that's consistently something. No matter what, people in the Village of La Bella and Lewis County still are living here because they want to own their own home, right? We understand that, we respect that. There should still be opportunities, and I believe kind of revitalizing this neighborhood would allow for some of that housing stock to be improved because the market would shift, and there would be a better housing resale value, which would make people want to do those investments. And again, kind of a bigger trend that we're seeing too is that kind of flexible housing, right? Housing that could be converted into renter if wanted, or could be smaller, kind of brown floor only with no second floor living, kind of that ability for people to get in and out easily, which would provide accessibility towards all ages and abilities. So that kind of thing to think about when we're looking at these plans. So that's the behind the scenes, why we propose, what we're looking at. I go through, or we go through kind of some specific regulation recommendations for all of the parcels. Don't necessarily think we need to do that, but I think the context is important here. That with the recent rezoning that you guys did, I think maybe one or two years ago, to convert this area into neighborhood commercial two is a wonderful boom for this area. This will really allow that kind of flexible, small-scale commercial activities that will provide those benefits for the nearby residential buildings and not be a detriment to them, not be something incongruous. And really kind of will encourage the neighborhood's kind of quality and aesthetic appeal by allowing those things to be a diverse flex of, you know, kind of those smaller-scale businesses, those restaurants and kind of little shops that people want to go and experience and will travel for. So that's kind of what we're proposing here, is that a walkable, kind of condensed area with destinations within it, with housing, a mix of housing and commercial development, and to really kind of re-envision this space. So, like we said, we had some specific parameters. First and foremost was the La Bella and Farmer's Co-op. That whole street on Forest Ave, which through this process, we did learn that the co-op owns Forest Ave, which, you know, in discussions, could be a benefit to a developer that was interested in reviewing that whole street and allow for them to close portions of it for pedestrian-only access, you know, or events on the intersection. That's something that could be discussed on a project-on-project basis if you have a proposal. But I do think that, keeping that in mind, that that's a special street, and that's a special opportunity for a developer to do something very kind of cool and different. I think keeping that zero lot line along that road will create kind of increased excitement about walkability too, and really kind of the density that currently exists there would be fitting to maintain. So yeah, we're really thinking kind of upper-unit housing with smaller commercial shops on the bottom, with the ability to close the street, have that pedestrian access for smaller events or festivals or something. That would be kind of an easy way to promote walkability and kind of close that street. And we did come up with some renderings, and then I kind of interspersed now because they're in the back, but I think it's kind of cool to look at. So this one, and I will say, these are just, we're imagining. So this isn't something that would make it, you know, that has any regulations based on it. This isn't anything that would be your beholden to. This is just kind of thinking big about these projects. So this would be Forest Ave. They would take all of these, you know, all of the kind of smaller, low-slung buildings across the whole street, raise them up two stories. So you have the two-story residential and then the first-floor commercial. And kind of again, that zero lot line, kind of more walkable, more kind of a destination point, and really kind of encourage active participation on the street and improve streetscape. So, any thoughts on this project in particular, or this street, or those parcels?
Also, I wanted to add for Hartley, this is, these concepts were pretty much sent to La Bella to develop based upon a vision session that Naturally Lewis had back in June or July, where we, Naturally Lewis had actually invited, had delivered hand, by hand invitations to everybody in the neighborhood corridor to come and attend this visioning session to show you what they would like to see. So these are all concepts from that session.
Right. So again, we wanted this to be based in the market truths, but we also wanted this to be something that the residents were interested in and engaged with and a part of. So as Cassie's point, this is something that was participatory process, that is something, I don't, the residents haven't seen these, this is the first time they've been publicly shown, but I think this would be something that people would feel felt fitting to based on the conversations. And I should have added, at those discussions, there was a conversation about kind of rebranding this and how this be a neighborhood with a name, rather than we kept calling it, you know, Trinity, Shady, Forest Ave. I believe through those processes, it was kind of discussed that let's call this the Three Trees Neighborhood. So we have a list that is shown kind of as describing the form of that. But looking at that, and that's what we call the visioning too, is referencing that as this kind of area that encompasses most of Forest Ave, parts of Shady, and parts of Trinity, most of those areas, just along that larger, following that rail line a little bit out to really focus around, this is kind of the heart of that neighborhood. Right next door, we have that vacant building from the La Bella Food Pantry. A long, kind of, it looks like it must have been sort of like, maybe some sort of agricultural storage at one point. Seems to have not been in use for many years.
It was a casket.
Yeah. Oh, even better.
That big long building?
Yes. Yes. The white...
It's the old AMF.
That's AMF. That was AMF.
Oh, the AMF.
The casket was VPJ then.
Okay. Even better.
Yep, that was the AMF buildings.
And one time it was a super fun site too, wasn't it?
If it was super fun, I'd, I'm just gonna assume it's plain by now because we...
There's something about all the laughter and stuff that we're...
Right, right. Interesting, interesting. Yeah, so this building is part of what the neighborhood is saying, okay, this is polite, right? We don't, this is not an active building. This is something that's kind of bringing the neighborhood down right now, not improving the community. So re-envisioning this site is something that was a priority within this process. And we really thought, this looks like commercial to me. This looks like a kind of a interior year-round bazaar, and it could be a primary market stop, it could be small shops that can be interchangeable. There's a couple of examples of something like this. If you've ever been to Boston, there's a market that has that kind of, you know, year-round vibe. You can go into a big building into the downtown. This type of building is truly one of the ones that you want to keep for the architectural value, I mean, and just kind of the historic vibe of the village. So we want to honor that, but kind of repurposing La Bella as equal for the village. So really kind of again, looking at this kind of being a commercial hub with, you know, again, interspersed smaller, you know, businesses within inside that could be changed and rent or lease some of the spaces that could be kind of facilitating smaller businesses like craft people and people who've made things and utilize this space in a year-round setting, which is always important for northern New York. Again, this is neighborhood two, so almost all of these are in neighborhood two, which is a wonderful value add. It allows for all of these, these uses are all permitted by the zone. There would not be any special permits required running these. This could be something that your law encourages. Adjacent to that is, I'm gonna show the next one, is a vacant parcel that we were looking to add into a community garden. Kind of add that as a destination component, but also bring value to the community. So you've got that building over here, you've got ample parking in between for both the community garden, the commercial space, and some of the, some space for the proposed residential lofts over here. So really just taking that whole strip on Trinity, re-imagining it, repurposing it, and making it bring a value add back to the village, that neighborhood, but then also the village at large.
And just really quick, Hartley, looping that into the DRI application. We actually have a project sponsor for that one. And the community gardens that you see right there are a little bit closer to the street than what will likely happen if the DRI is funded. The, you may know that the vacant property behind the VPJ property, more towards the back of that building, is also owned by the Food Pantry. And that's a project that they're supporting, is that they would like to bring a community garden to that area to utilize that space just to obviously benefit the community and to benefit their facility to have fresh produce there. So this is actually a project that will be submitted on the DRI.
Yeah, and that's ultimately, like we said before, the real goal of all of this is to show the state that these are not just daydream projects that Cassie cooked up herself and, you know, the night before the application was due. But these were well-thought-out, community-driven approaches that had, you know, were reality-based and made sense for the community and had that community buy-in. So this is really that process that we can show the state, hey, we're serious about these projects. This is real.
Community buy-in and a project sponsor that wants to develop it. That's another important piece today. There's an actual project sponsor that wants to do just that.
Cannot be understated how important both those aspects are for this process and how successful the county has been in kind of assisting the village in coming up with that. It is just truly exciting. And then kind of working our way down the street, like I said before, the brick building at 5512 Trinity is, again, another neighborhood commercial. This is, this is an old brick building and really looking to convert that into, I think maybe four residential units, maybe two, depending on the size. But to have that again be kind of a high-value add to the community is a different type of housing opportunity. So you've got these kind of farther down over here. You've got a lot of kind of townhouse-style apartments. And then over here, you have some more like bigger lofts that are maybe a little bit more removed from other density, other dense areas, but still part of this collective kind of community on this street. Any questions about any of this? I think we have another rendering of...
I think we had, yeah, the community area is a different perspective.
This is...
Yeah.
Another kind of view of that and showing really building in that community space and as a destination. Thinking of this as something that again could be utilized for some festivals, some kind of activities or events to go to, live music outside, kind of food truck sort of thing as a hub to bring people to and then have to go to other shops or be close because they live there. Next on our tour is the Farmer's Few Brewing Building. This one we did not do a rendering of, but again, we know the IDA purchased this building and really kind of thinking of including it within that visioning. So we're looking at this to be a business incubator. And we saw this as a real opportunity to use that data that I talked about for the market analysis before. We know that those kind of accommodation and food services sector and experience sectors are things that are going to grow. This is their opportunity to test these ideas out and kind of find, to, you know, find, finesse their projects, right? So this would be a good opportunity for the IDA to support those types of businesses that we want to see growing within the village. And we know there's an ability for that to grow. The next page, page 17, we have where the building was recently demolished, the residential unit. This is one of the only ones, I think, in this entire process that is still zone residential. And like Cassie said, made sense because up until the summer, it really was residential. So we wanted to include this because now that it's demolished, perhaps there's an idea to change this into not another single family, but to have something that would be leveraging some of these other uses or allow for another type of development to go there that wasn't necessarily single-family. So just to keep an open mind about that project, that site, and as that, you know, redevelopment occurs, you know, it would not, you know, since it's right next to that Neighborhood Commercial Two district, it might make sense to have that kind of merged into that bigger district as it shifts. Lastly, we have that almost seven-acre parcel on Lanier Street that Double Play Sports Community Center owns. That's a vacant big parcel that we really think would be a wonderful value add for a walkable destination for outdoor recreation for the residents. That was another component of the survey, that people still wanted to be able to walk to destinations, be outside, have somewhere to go, something they could walk their dog to, maybe play some recreational sports, something that could be facilitated in that space and keep that open space, outdoor recreation, and program that as the village sees fit. But to have that be an area that was left kind of undeveloped, so to speak, versus some of this more dense commercial and residential, you have it kind of right next door. So, any questions on any of that? This process is not the end of this visioning. This is the start, this is the first bit. This is what you use for future grant applications, not just the DRI. These are parcels that are in flux right now with ownership and kind of future visioning, but this can help market those sites. I think again, I would strongly encourage posting this on your website or having some ability to say, these are the sites, these are available parcels that we're looking to develop, and this is the village's vision, if you decide to adopt this tonight. For how we see this, and help developers better understand how you want to support their projects. Developers, you know, they are willing to take on some risks, but one of the risks they're not really interested in taking on is a community that's going to be against their project from the start, right? So if you tell them what you're looking for, that's gonna help them build a project that's in line with your vision. So that's what I would encourage you to take as the next step after the DRI, and to really kind of continue looking at these parcels to kind of keep this vision going forward and let people know you're open for business and you want these types of development. Based on community feedback, based on the market analysis of what the market holds and what housing needs you're gonna have, this is the strategy for this. Thank you so much for your time. If you have any questions, any feedback, you guys can keep these. I apologize that it says town. You can put a little sticker over it if you want, but I can reset...
We'll have that corrected with final copy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, anything else? You guys are an easy crowd.
Thank you, heart.
All right, well, I appreciate your time tonight, thank you so much.
Hey, Cassie? Has there been any movement with the co-op later?
They're working on finalizing that. That's something that we were hoping to get into the DRI because we had a developer, like I said, contact Joe, who's very interested in developing that four-door, but we didn't, initially Louis was nervous about moving ahead with concepts when there, there wasn't any final... So, that's still in the works, is my understanding, but they were very much a part of the visioning and very supportive of a lot of the ideas that were submitted. Yeah.
So, the, so the co-op's on board, they, they want to move in?
Well, I, that's the plan. I, I, and I don't know if they want to move, from what I understand, it's kind of like they have to move, or there's, there's reasons why they're moving that way. Yeah.
Okay, see now Cassandra's here, I don't want to make her wait through our whole meeting, so...
I appreciate that.
She's down here under eight correspondence, Cassandra Bill, Director of the Miami Committee of Pro Housing Committee's resolution. So, can you take a look at that, maybe you want to explain that?
Yep, so let me explain that because that builds off of the, the DRI, so it all works in unison. I'm not sure if, if, um, some of you were following the budget, um, that Governor Holko was proposing, or some of the, uh, inclusions in the, the last year's budget, but she was proposing requirements for housing permits to increase, or, I'm sorry, permits within municipalities to increase their housing stock, 1% for downstate, 0.33% for upstate over the past year, or permits increasing their housing stock by 3% downstate, 1% upstate over the past three years. Now, what that means for all of you is you have zoning, right? You've already mapped out what you want, where you want it, and what standards you expect, right? Well, this, with the housing shortage across the state, um, they recognize that maybe some of that zoning or some of those regulations could be, um, counterproductive for the increase of housing stock. So, originally in the budget, they had proposed that this would be a requirement. It wasn't passed, it was removed last minute, um, but something that we've been watching that, that, um, the governor had signed, um, into executive order was, um, the pro-housing community program, which we are working on getting information out to all of our municipalities in Lewis County, um, about, but I wanted to bring this up to your level immediately. She just, um, released the actual information and checklist of what this program means, um, I believe on August 31st. So, we were able to act really quickly, again, because we were expecting for it, we were waiting for it, and we were ready to get you guys the information because the reason Laugville needs to know about it is, um, that localities that achieve a pro-housing community designation, which is what I'm going to go through with you and the, the reasoning for your resolution, um, is because they receive priorities in their applications for key discretionary funding programs, such as the Downtown Revitalization Initiative, the New York Forward Program, the Regional Council Capital Fund, and the Market New York Program, meaning they are prioritizing awarding communities who are pro-housing communities with those awards. So, it is of extreme importance and a huge opportunity for the village of Laugville to act on this before you submit that DRI application because it'll put you light-years above other communities that maybe aren't, that don't have this on their radar, okay? So, what is the, what is the certification? What do you have to do? Um, there's two options for the certification for a pro-housing community program. Option one is that communities can show their housing permitting has increased by a set percentage, so in, in a, in a lawless case, 0.33 over the past year, or, um, 1% over the past three years. However, we've already run those numbers with Ward's office and his data, and you do not need that. So, you automatically revert to option two, which communities that have not yet seen housing growth can achieve the pro-housing community's designation by taking the following actions to achieve certification. You have to pass the resolution, which, um, they have a draft, which I've supplied all of you with, stating your commitment to pro-housing principles, which, by the way, you've already started enacting with the recent zoning change that you've, you followed through with last year, changing the industrial zone to, um, a neighborhood commercial two zone, which is a huge step forward, uh, and then submit documentation, uh, on the zoning code, zoning map, and past five years of housing permits, which my office is putting together for you so that you have everything you need to submit, should you decide to submit it. So, that's why I'm here, I wanted to make sure you had that background, um, the draft resolution that is again before you, um, and so if you decide to pass the draft resolution, again, my office will put together all of the other work that's needed to submit to the state, um, to make sure that you are on the top of the list for the DRI.
So, what do we need to do tonight?
Adapt, yeah. Adapt, pass the resolution, yeah.
I'll make a motion and leave that.
I want to ask a question first. Looking at the pledge, number one, this is streamlining permitting for multiple-family housing, affordable housing, accessible housing, accessory dwelling units, and supportive housing. My question here is, I don't really trust the governor.
Well, that's still going to be our process.
But what I'm, where I'm coming from is, we already have zoning for like residential areas, commercial, whatnot. If we signed this and go along with it, the governor's not going to come in and say, well, I want to set this housing right here, and maybe the residents in that area don't want that kind of housing in that area.
No, and I understand that. This, that's why she wants you to send in your zoning code, your zoning map, so that you can show them that your zoning is not prohibitive, prohibitive to housing development, which it's not. And I think that there's a lot of things that you could be doing with accessory dwelling units, like Cartley had alluded to. You have an aging population, we need to get a lot of the, um, senior, um, residences out. I mean, they, a lot of them are finding it overwhelming to upkeep the 200, or 2,000, 3,000 square foot home. So, if, a, a solution to that would be, okay, let's, let's do ADUs, and you could put things in your zoning for ADUs. It's really, it's hard because the resolution is a one-size-fits-all approach, which we , we know is not reflective of our rural communities, um, so...
I just don't want the state to end and say, okay, we're going to use eminent domain and we're taking this property and you've got a housing project going in here, right in the middle of a nice residential neighborhood or something.
The, I, I wish that I could speak for the governor, but I can't, but my interpretation is that they are really putting this in the locality's hands. It's similar to the Climate Smart Communities pledge that we put forth on the county level. We're going to do our due diligence and try to push and advocate for these changes and improvements, so that it's not dilutive towards affordable housing development, ADUs, which you guys are already doing in the rural nature of it all.
That was the only question I had.
That was a good question.
Where does the county stand right now on, uh, the homeless housing development? Is the Snow Street still on the radar?
I have no idea, that is not my office.
You asking me that question?
Why, no, I wasn't, but I see you looking at me like I'm looking at you.
Our office is, is reviewing some sites and working with, it's not the county directly, it's, you could tell me the name of the agency that's...
Snowbell.
Snowbell, yes, sir. Um, working with them to come up with a suitable site.
Is that one of the sites?
Snow Street?
Yes.
Yes, but it doesn't meet your zoning.
So, and, and, and the community is adamantly against that, it lives up there. So, I have a problem with that still being on there, and so...
Well, I mean, I guess...
Snow Street doesn't meet the zoning, I don't believe.
Correct, no, it doesn't.
Right.
Well, if we pass this resolution, and then, you know, if, if you read the resolution, we've got to be on the fast track.
This isn't about homeless housing, this is, it's a completely different...
Yeah, it's related to the subject.
No, this is about, um, like affordable housing, um, and just ADUs in general, just expanding housing, it doesn't even need to be affordable.
It'd probably be similar to like when they built the Valley View years ago, we built another one.
You just, yeah, we need to expand housing because people are going to live. It, it, it does not have, that's not, that's not why I'm here.
Yeah, not me neither. I mean, and, and I'm not working on the project, so I don't know all the details, but I know they're looking for sites, and, and Snow Street is still being talked about, but, but it's, uh, but it does have its challenges, right? I mean, you, you guys don't want to...
And again, I'm, I'm not throwing this, it always seems that today's September whatever, 18th, whatever, 20th, the thing has developed September 18th, this has got to go in in a week. It's always last minute, last minute, last minute.
Well, I think you could blame that on the governor.
Yeah, that's...
That's not ours, it's ours.
Like I said, this was, this was, August 31st is when we got this information, and we pushed it out to you, but I don't know if I...
I dealt with many last minutes from other agencies also.
But that Snowbell project is totally different from what we're discussing here.
Yes, not related at all, I hadn't even thought of it, but then you asked that question.
The only thing I wanted to say is, you, you know, I, I, I think this is all a great idea, this and that, but, and they're talking about an aging population, I don't see anything about aging, uh, an aging housing unit. I mean, we, we've got people in Moose County, right now, my mother was one until she, she passed away, living in Meadowbrook and Carthage. What do we have, Tim, for, for them? I mean, this is all a great idea, but where, where does that come in? Well, you've got a 6.9-acre spot where Double Play was.
You could think, yeah, you could put a spot right there.
That's actually something that the res, the neighborhood did not want, they did not want housing, that was something that was adamantly opposed for that parcel.
Just like Snow Street is.
When we did that vision...
That, that...
Even, uh, even in the older...
No resident, yeah.
Well, what, well, what is that, what building that, that's, that's going to have apartments in it, right?
That, that's where the LaFahmer Co-op is right now.
Right, but that's apartments.
Right, yeah.
All second, third floor apartments.
Yeah. That has to be IDA accessible, I mean, so, same as Lanier, they're going to have second story apartments too, but I understand what you're saying.
And the other thing I noticed on that is, where do they park?
Uh, actually, the parking, they have to have parking on each end because there's public ownership on each end of that, so the parking would be limited to the ends of the building.
For, I mean, the pictures show, and I got it, it's just...
Right, no, I understand.
But the pictures show six apartments.
Nope.
There's no way you're going to put six cars on either end of that building.
That's, that, that's true, but there's a lot of space in that, in the woods, to be putting parking, but we also want to be strategic on where we put that parking, because do you want a whole neighborhood full of asphalt?
But again...
And the whole point of living in the downtown is so that you don't have to have a vehicle, that's another reason.
Full of what? Full of what? Asphalt.
Asphalt.
Asphalt. My doctor said asphalt. It's not like it, it didn't really. Then we got to take a look.
Do you want to move on to the resolution then?
Well, we've actually, this Snowbell housing thing is totally different than this, is what you're saying.
Yes.
Then I will make a resolution as we go through with this pro-housing resolution. I'll make a motion as we go.
Can you get a second?
Well, I'll, I'll second because if this is going to drive the DRI, it's...
Communities with this, uh, who enact the pro-housing community program are prioritized for the DRI, for the New York Main Street, for the New York, the Market New York Program, for all the discretionary funds, so it's very important that the villages...
I'm going to vote for this with caveat, that I'm going to propose the rest of this order. This is the third year that we've worked with the county to get this, and so I'm, I'm fully supporting this, but the mayor and I have discussed this, and I don't want to put words in the mayor's mouth, but, uh, he said, if we don't get it this year, maybe we shouldn't do it. I say, we're going to get it sooner or later, but if we don't get it this year, we look in a different direction to have, have leadership take it, so I, I will vote for it, based on any kind of understanding of it, and now, you know, they've, we've had...
Okay, we got a, we got a first and a second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, this motion carries. Anything else, Cassandra?
Could you, if you got two minutes, explain to the board what happens if you do get the DRI. I mean, just in a short sentence, enough.
Sure, so...
How long it takes to go through.
So, just so everybody knows, you, only one community that I'm aware of gets the DRI the first time, or even the second time, typically the third or fourth time, but anyway. Um, so, once you are awarded the DRI, which typically happens November, December, last year it happened the first week of January, so it was pushed off quite a bit, um, they, uh, assign, the New York, New York State assigns the village a consultant who works to do it from start. They set up a local planning committee, so they'll have you identify members of the community that you want on this local planning committee, okay? And from there, um, they do this whole process that we've been doing for you all over again. Um, and we've worked with Bergman on the first two applications, we worked with Labella on it last year, and, um, we decided to save everybody money and to do it ourselves, and actually, this is the first year that we've had over the amount of, the amount of projects. But, um, after you're awarded, that's when really you need to go out and solicit those projects all over again and put it in what's called a strategic investment plan to send back to New York State for them to finalize and approve. So, really, the award is going to start this process all over again to finalize all of the projects.
New York State comes in and works with us when they get that happen.
Yep, and they're consultants, that's right.
And the projects could change, is what, that's the whole point.
Yes, the projects can and likely will.
What you see there could be totally different than two...
100%, those are just conceptual, based upon the visioning question, but... Yep. Anything else?
Okay, approval of minutes, excuse, and some board members, approval of the regular meeting minutes on 8/16.
I'll make a motion to approve of the minutes.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the motion for the special board meeting on 8/23.
I'll make that one.
Second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, got a, well, we're in minutes here, going through, uh, last year's September minutes, we found a mistake. Um, we did a public hearing where the sewer rate increased back on September 21st, 2022, and when the minutes were published, the motion to raise the sewer rates and, uh, was left out of the minutes. So, we need to do, uh, I guess it would be an amendment to the September 21st, 22 minutes to add that motion, and luckily, looking back on next videos, I found, or Pam actually found it, uh, where we did everything the way we were supposed to, and Chuck, you made the motion to raise the rates, uh, Ed Murphy seconded it, and the board was all in favor of it, so we do have it on tape. So, we need to amend the 9/122 minutes.
I'll make a motion, we made that amendment.
Based on Chuck's recommendation, I'm going to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and who's to sound approval of vouchers?
All right, general fund, $86,935.36. Water fund, $110,395.40. Sewer fund, $127,530.62. And the capital fund, $483,767.69. They've all been audited, and I make a motion that we pay the bills.
And I'll second, and if Joe wants to, uh, expand upon any of this stuff on capital?
Uh, yeah, but, well, basically, on the water fund, I just won $62,902 of that with school taxes between Beaver River and LaFahmer Academy. Uh, and then, uh, the $91,900 on a sewer was a mon-payment for phase one when we were doing sewer plant a few years ago.
Has LaFahmer Academy been built for the Cross River? Thank you.
Thank you.
And Henderson Brothers is starting the big one on capital there, hundred and fifty one thousand, six fifty nine. That's for work down at the sewer plant where they're putting in the brand new diffusers and everything. And the high number at Spencer Electric, he's up there finishing up. Doing all the wiring, the panel boxes and the controls and everything for the groundwater project. And if anybody's got any other questions, I'll try and answer them. That's where the biggies are. Now, we had a first and a second. All in favor, pay bills?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unfinished business, wastewater upgrades.
So the North Country and APG and Spencer Electric are down to countless items now. I'm working with Colin to coordinate the training for the for the final items. The that's and that that training is going to be for the disinfection building, the pump skid in the camp feeding room behind his office and for the blower building. The training for the blowers can't be done until Henderson's complete, which is about, they should be done installing all the aeration lines next week, again, the next week. Then Parks and will come out second week in October and, you know, kind of fine tune the diffusers. Give give us the final blessing on the diffusers to make sure that they're operating the way. They're the major factor, so they want them to be operating in accordance with their their methods. So they they come out and tune those. And all that really means is they adjust the valves up on the up on the shore there. So. So that should be, everything will be installed next, the end of next week and then the Parks and will be on site two weeks from. Middle of October to do the final tuning of the of the diffusers, but Colin will be getting trained in the next. We're going to try to schedule that. It's hard to get all those players in the same room, but that'll be scheduled over the next month. And you had two change orders. I'll talk about those. One was a no cost change order to take. The, we deducted the aeration lines from Lagoon Two from. APG. APG and we and APG also had to install ten aeration lines in Lagoon One. We deducted that work from APG and paid and hired.
Henderson.
Henderson Brothers to do that work. We also deducted any work that Henderson was going to have to do in in the Lagoon Two. So this ends up being a no cost change order for Henderson Brothers. You're getting you're getting a pretty good deduct, which I think we already executed the deduct for APG, didn't we, Joe? Yeah. So you had that a while ago, anyway. So this is a no cost change order. The other change orders associated with the, we wanted to get an extended warranty on the.
I don't, that just came in like half an hour before the board meeting. I don't think you have that in your packets.
Okay, sorry.
They don't, they can't go to prove, they don't.
Okay.
So we just.
Could you could you tell me the numbers then? So we we bought an extended warranty in there that we're buying, we're trying to buy extended warranty. This is for the parts that Henderson Brothers bought for Lagoon Two that we won't be installing. We're storing those in the in the village, village funds. Because of that, we wanted an extended warranty because these parts won't get installed for a few more years. So we bought a three year warranty for that.
I believe you, EFC.
An EFC required.
EFC required.
Yes. The other work associated with that, we were doing a time of materials and that's where when we when we put the liner, before we put the liner in Lagoon One, it was very wet. There was a lot of groundwater issues. It was deep and we thought, we had to bring in a bunch of extra fill to to so we could work on it and install a liner. In the end, the fill ended up being a little bit higher than we anticipated, so they had to trim, they had to cut some of these lines. So the first part of that change order is them going out and measuring the depth of the lagoon for the for the whole lagoon. And then there's, I think it was forty five hours that they had for shortening some of those lines. So the so the so the diffuser is a foot off the bottom, not sitting on the bottom. And damaging, potentially damaging.
Basically, the amount for that change order three. Excuse me. Yes, change order three for Henderson Brothers, the amount with shortening the lines and the extended warranty. Is twenty three thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents. So you know what the amount is.
Yeah.
Anything else on that?
No, those are.
Okay, so let's take them separately. We'll need a motion for change order number two, which is a no cost change order.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody have any more questions on number three? If not, you need a motion to approve that one.
What was that?
That was the diffuser lines. It was the extended.
Shorten the lines and extend the warranty. That's the one that's twenty three thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. That one's.
I'll make a motion.
The second on that?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So overall, the wastewater treatment is is Henderson will be done in a couple of weeks, other than that we're doing some minor.
Forget why you're pointing down on that phase two, aren't we?
Yes, trying to get the, yeah, like I said, Henderson will be done by the end of next week. It should be done by the end of next week. And then after that, it'll just be punching things out, getting getting the getting the training completed, which is kind of a problem because it's everything. All these parts and pieces, once they, once they get this part, they go there to start it up and then they realize that this part's missing. And of course, it's not just on some shelf somewhere, so it takes a while to get everything. They're getting that worked out. They were here last Friday and we should have everything, everything is operating. Now, and there's just a couple of punch items to complete. On the water side, the the power's been installed, the National Grid's been back, there's power to the transformer. And then Spencer earlier this week or later last week, they they finished running power to the wells. Startup for the wells is set up right now for October sixth. The supplier has to come in and. Representative from Boone Pumps has to come in and ferry those up before they. Before we start running water back to the plant. Then we'll, once the wells get started, then we'll do our disinfection and flushing disinfection on the transmission line between the wells to the building. And then we then we should be all done by then because Spencer is working in the building. All that stuff is there. They're finishing up the wiring and the controls as as Joe mentioned, in the building. So middle of October, we should have all the the training and the startup done for that, unless we run into something that we. That's it. Yeah.
Street lighting, LED conversion. They were supposed to be back here in September to put the two new lights in. I got an email from them the other day. I checked to see what the status was. And now they're telling me it's going to probably be the first or second week of October because they were waiting. For National Grid to give them the go ahead for another community so the contractor could catch both communities at once. So that's the only thing we really got to do to finish that project up, is get them to the. Zoning changes, so a couple of things I know about that. I don't know if Tim's had a chance to talk to Kathy. I talked to her a little. One she was worried about, and I think I gave everybody a copy last time of. Definition of driveway because the pathway that's going to be going by the new apartments over there by Dollar General. And another thing that's come up is you got people, which I didn't realize. They got to get building permits, but they also, I guess, have to go before the planning department and everything to build a handicap ramp. Because I guess.
On some, on some occasions, yes.
And so I guess, I know looking at some other communities around here, they they consider handicap ramp a temporary structure. Used to provide access for a person with disabilities, considered to be a temporary structure and therefore exempt from zoning setback requirement or some permits. The only problem is, I would think, you would probably want them to have to go to codes and get a permit only so it was built to ADA compliant standards. If they're going to build a ramp, it should be built.
Yeah, I mean, our procedure right now is we generally don't take any payment, but we do take a permit so that they. I think the biggest issue is ramps on front of properties because of the, the way the zoning law reads right now, you can't be any closer than your neighbor beside you. So if you put a ten foot ramp out and you're both the same distance from the road, then you're, you know, in violation of the zoning. So there just needs to be some things changed there. Maybe exempting out ramps, permit required, but exempt from zoning, something along that, the zoning setbacks, something along that. But I have not had a chance to talk to, I haven't had a chance to talk to Kathy.
So is that something your department can do or should we have Joe try to put something together?
Well, we got to figure out what we want first, you know, we got to come up with a plan. Let me talk to her and we'll come up with something.
Because I did have one phone call from a resident that they're going through the procedure, but they thought it would be a lot to put up a ramp.
And sometimes when it comes to a situation that needs to be put up in a hurry.
Continue the voting of that one.
Anything else, Mayor? I'd like to say something on your old business or unfinished business. There's not any agenda, but I think it's appropriate to bring up.
What's that, Dan?
I'd like to speak on unfinished business or old business. We just got done with the DRI proposal. One of the comments made was, we're not going to do a certain element within that because. The residents of the community didn't want it, which I applaud. In the meantime, we heard from Matt that Stowe Street is still on the agenda for housing. And I got a feeling if the people watch this video, they live on Stowe Street, they're going to be, you know, what off? So, I want to finish, Matt. Okay, sorry, I want to finish. So so with that being said, we just watched the election in this county. Between, I believe, that and Rails to Trails, where we've got three new legislators, Mr. Dart's being one of the new incumbents coming in. I would hope that with everything on Stowe Street, it's not a viable answer. That street's congested enough now, it's a hill street and it's it's just wrong to even consider it. And again, I just don't think the people are being listened to. That's my opinion and that's my statement. There you go, Matt, you're free.
Okay, so the, we were we were asked by Snowball Housing to come up with a location for us, for for homeless. For this facility. We gave them several choices, several, you know, we looked at a couple of sources that they gave us and then we tried. Then none of those were acceptable. None of them met the zoning requirements, so we we started looking for other other places, other other. You know, in different zones, we didn't go within the town and the county. We we looked at.
The county had a place and they sold it.
Okay, I I didn't, I'm sorry.
I don't, I'm just telling you.
But but I guess what I'm saying is the the. The Stowe Street along with several other properties that that don't have zoning and don't, you know, probably, you know, aren't really good choices are all the. There are no good choices, right? There's no good spots. So we're trying to find one. That's still on the list because it's the it's. And I'll be honest, because it's the only place that has the services that these people be nearby. Now, that doesn't mean it's approved. It doesn't mean we're going to, we're going to try to force it down anyone's throat. We're not forcing anything, right? We just present a plan. We're we're trying to find something for our client and there aren't any good choices, so. That's why Stowe Street is still on the list is because there's some good reasons to put it there. Local residents isn't isn't one of them. I get it. And I'm not and I'm not saying they should accept it because it's the only place we can put it. That, so that's why it's still on the list is because there's. It's a pretty short list. Not a lot of good places to work.
But the other thing, I'd like to say that's not zoning for that, so we would have to change the zonings. If we don't change the zoning, they can't build it.
Politically, it was good for the county to pass that off to Snowball Housing.
All right, new business, craft surcharges, wastewater, July twenty three, five hundred dollars. We have a motion to. Pay a crap, five hundred dollars for the wastewater on July.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, wastewater for August twenty twenty three, there were no surcharges. We don't have to do anything on that one. Water surcharges, August twenty twenty three, there were none. We don't have to do anything on that. Okay, coming down to water contracts. Basically, the municipal board reviewed the contracts and they came up with, they want to keep everything the same. Just basically, we need to. Go through and upgrade, update the dates for when they're going to expire and update the signature pages, I believe, is all we need to do on those. But we would need a motion from our board to go along with the municipal board. Their recommendation was we just. Bring the dates and signature pages and everything up to date.
I'll make the motion, yeah.
I'll second that. I'm sorry, I didn't hear who made the motion.
He made the motion. That that is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty three dash thirteen. Procedures for post insurance compliance with federal tax law. This basically is coming from Bob Smith from our bond counsel to saying we should have this resolution in our files for, because we're dealing with. Bonds and stuff through the federal government. I don't know if you have any comments on that?
No comments.
And he's just basically saying the board should adopt this particular, which will keep us in compliance with the federal government on all our bonding projects.
I'll make that motion.
Will we adopt this?
Second?
Second.
Okay, Dan, I didn't, Dan, you got to speak up. Second. All in favor?
Aye. First time I ever accused of that.
Budget amendments. Pam's got us a list here. Anyone have any questions on that? Now, we need a motion for her to be able to do all this.
Yeah, I'll wait for the motion. I'll make the motion when we accept these amendments.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, workplace violence prevention policy program. We didn't print that out because it's twenty some pages or more. But I sent that to everybody. Hopefully they got it in an email. Anybody got any questions on that? Are they okay with it? Need a motion to accept that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, scheduling a special meeting. What's going on here is. I'll give you the whole rundown. Coming up here in October. We got a bond that's coming due and. We don't want to renew it. We want to pay it out and talk with Jeff Smith and Municipal Solutions. We want to go to the long term bonding on on that. This is on a groundwater project. This is on a groundwater project. We wanna take it right to the long-term bonding and not have to renew the short-term ban. But we have a bill. We know we're gonna be getting a bill from SC Spencer on more electrical stuff for the groundwater, for roughly a hundred sixty-three thousand dollars. We wanna get that out of the short-term bonding money that we have so we can get it reimbursed by EFC. And EFC will be cutting us off from drawing on that account the first week of October. So if we have a meeting, I'd like to schedule it for the second, which is Monday. We can, basically, to pay that bill to SC Spencer, and then that can come out of that bonding, and we'll get the money through the long term with EFC. And then Jeff Smith can go and put the draw request in by... He wants to put a draw request in to EFC for that, October fifth. I mean, once, I believe it's October twelfth, we can no longer draw on that ban.
The new long-term bond, will that be callable?
What's that, Dan?
Will it be callable? In other words, if the interest rates go down, will we get rid of that bond and...
This one that's renewable was callable.
Okay, well, the next one be callable?
But we don't wanna renew it, we wanna...
Oh, you're... Okay, you're not...
We wanna get rid of it and go with the long-term bonding, which will put us into that zero percent...
So the bonding is gonna stay in place? It's not gonna be a renewal bond?
No. It'll be... The long bonding will be a new one, Dan, but that will be for the total project, which is gonna be... Then we'll be at like our thirty-year zero percent. The part that we have to pay back that we don't get from EFC. But the thing is, if we renew this bond, we probably would end up paying... Right now, with the federal government raising interest rates and things, you're probably looking at about three-point-six, three-point-seven percent interest. So you're probably looking at nine-hundred thousand dollars to renew it over a period of time. We don't wanna do that.
No.
I'll make a motion, we schedule that meeting for, did you say October second?
Second, yeah. But we can do it in the morning, too, if any... If you guys wanted to get together, say, ten o'clock or so. Because that would be better for Pam, too, if she's gonna be here that day.
I'll second that.
For ten o'clock?
Yep.
Is that okay with me? Yes, it's a Monday. Now, do we have to publish this in the paper?
That was like my... Particularly, Pam, our new local village clerk. Yeah, so if you go forward with a special meeting, then what happens is, is you have to notice the publication, et cetera. If, rather than that, if you merely adjourned your meeting today to October second, your adjournment would not need to require publication.
I would accept that. We can't, we can't...
Subchange your motion.
So it's up to the board, but you...
We did that once before.
Yes, sir.
Me?
Yeah, we don't need... Yeah, we don't need to schedule a special meeting. We just need to adjourn this meeting to continue on October second.
And so if you... So if you think that if you have a special meeting, then you have to do the notice for publication and as for those enumerated purposes. If you made an adjournment to a date and time, you don't have to do additional publication. And because it's an adjournment, it covers whatever topics and then some. So you could add to it at that point.
So when we do that...
So at the end of this meeting, we basically adjourn...
You're saying a motion to adjourn the meeting till whatever date?
And then when we make a motion on the second, we make a motion for the original date today and that date? Or will we need to do that?
Well, we wouldn't... I mean, we would need to...
You can rescind your motion, if you want.
I'll rescind that motion.
Okay, but Pam and Wendy have been busy putting together a permission to dispose of... She's got a whole list here. We need a motion to be able to do that.
I'll make the motion, will you dispose of that list?
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before I go, of course, Thomas, Mayor, I had a couple of things that are on the agenda that are probably... Paul Dines is aware of a request for a crosswalk down on East State Street, and I would like to explain, have him explain the issues at hand for that, for why right now we can't do that.
There was a request to Dan on the corner of East State Street and Shady. Have a crosswalk from East State Street going towards Fast Track. The reason you can't do it is because it needs to be ADA compliance. There's not a sidewalk on Fast Track's side of Shady, so you can't have a crosswalk that doesn't go anywhere. So that's pretty much it.
Thank you. The other thing I'd like to bring up is I'm pleased that Mike Tabor was one to step up for us in our time of need. And then with the resignation of our clerk, Pam was doing the same. I've known both of them for years. I worked closely with Pam for my full eight years as mayor and nine years back on the board. I appreciate her coming back. I know her personally, and she's a veteran employee, and I think she deserves to be recognized for that. And I'm sure she's not appreciating of me doing that, but I had to go. Thank you for coming back, Dan.
You done?
I'm done. I thought that pregnant mom was all I needed.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Hopefully, everybody got a copy of the notification, budgeting and accounting training, New York State Tubal Commission. And that would have... There was a question brought up, and they did get an answer on it. Because originally, I think one of them was talking about towns, but there's a lot of stuff in fire holding village budgets also. So anybody that would like to sign up. This one instructor, this Larry Peace, he worked with the Patrol's Office, and I've been at a couple of meetings when he's been at. He's really knowledgeable, so he's a good speaker. Just, if anybody wants to sign up for that, they're welcome to. Anybody have any questions on that one? All right, we got a nice letter from William Brown and Sons on how our DPW was helping out. I found a neighbor having... We've already talked to the community development?
Yes.
Lawable Fire Department, new members. Tim O'... R. Kelly and Ruth Lehman has new members of the Lawable Fire Department. Should make a motion to...
I'll make the motion to accept that new message?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Resignations. We don't need to do a motion for resignations without anything, so... Do you have anything you wanna say? When we're talking fire department?
We'll wait for Dan to bring it up.
Well, we can do it now. I'd like for Joe to fill us in. I could not make that Friday night meeting where they met with Montague concerning the contract, and I haven't had a chance to talk with Joe to even know where we're at with that. So, Joe, if you wanna... Hey, you don't know where we're at yet.
It's up in the air for money now, but... So the Friday night meeting, we had a discussion board meeting last month on Friday night to receive notification from the Town of Montague that they were not interested in renewing their contract with us next year. So we drafted a letter to the board to explain where our numbers came from. We didn't want them to think that it was just coming from nowhere, which we met with all of the towns, as well as the mayor, to explain where our budget numbers come from and where they came from this year and why they were higher than last year. With the exception of Town of Montague, they were the only town that did not meet with us to discuss it. Everyone else left the meeting, from what we undertook it as, everyone left it with a good understanding of where the numbers come from and what they're needed for. So we sent a certified letter back that stated... It was basically along the lines of, "We understand that you feel you need to look elsewhere. We don't like this option, but there's nothing really we can do because ultimately, it's their town board's decision." Since then, we have heard... We had a few members go to their town board meeting. My understanding is they will be contracting tentatively with the Town of Martinsburg for the Martinsburg Fire Department to take over. However, they have a public hearing next month on their budget, which would be part of approving that. And my understanding is, I've heard there will be several taxpayers there to discuss it because they're not quite pleased with that decision. So it's not a done deal yet, but it's... The Mars fans, we're just... We're... We did what we were supposed to do, we sent them the letter, we sent them the explanation, and that's the extent of it.
Forty dollars a day is what we're asking for from the Town of Montague. Forty dollars?
No, a household. How a day, a household?
No, it's thirteen thousand dollars, right?
Right.
Divide that by...
On a hundred thousand dollar house, it would be thirty-five dollars a year.
But what I'm saying is it'd be divided by the three-hundred-sixty-five days. That's where the figure I'm coming from. It's almost the same.
Gotcha, so... So we... Yeah, so that's... It's up in the air right now. It's not... Nothing's finalized, but we'll see what happens.
Sad part about it is, they still have to... We still have to provide mutually correct...
Correct.
And so that has its good points and its bad points. And I think anybody can read between the lines there. But I applaud our fire department, and I applaud all the other communities that accepted what was presented to them, and we'll just leave it at that.
Village attorney, anything? Nothing. I just got a couple of things. I know last month, we talked about problems with the server and one of the computers in the evidence room in the police department. Edmonds is supposed to be here tomorrow to install our new server and upgrade the evidence computer in the police department. And there's two new switches for the servers that need to be replaced. They're supposed to replace those, so hopefully, that will all be taken care of tomorrow, and we shouldn't have any more worries about our server going down again. The other thing is, as you walked in, you probably noticed the floors look quite a bit better than what they did a month ago.
Jem, I hope...
We got the same problem over in the police department. And from my recollection of... Those floors have not been done since that building was built. And I got an estimate from the same gentleman that did these floors, and he gave me an estimate of fifteen hundred dollars to do the floors over there. And talking with Pam, I know it wasn't budgeted, but... She's a good old number cruncher.
Is there nothing? Is there money somewhere?
She thinks we can find it someplace.
Okay, do it.
So I'm asking the board if we can have permission to go ahead and get the floors all redone over the police department. Basically stripped and lax, so... The thing is, if they're in bad shape now, and if we let them go, we're gonna end up replacing the floors, and that's gonna cost even more, so...
I gladly make the motion, then you spend the fifteen hundred dollars to do it.
I know, I appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I had. Court Treasurer, anything?
Just that I gave you all the detail of revenues and expenditures for general waters, so I just for you to look at for August. I guess that's the end of August.
Chief of Police?
Yes, thank you, sir. It's been a very busy month. It's the time of year, so that our activities do pick up. Children are back to school. We had pay being up on North State Street, and the football games over at school along with cream cheese festival. The good thing is, is everything turned out really well. The payment got done. School didn't lose a football game, and as far as we know, no one got hurt. At the cream cheese festival, we had a report of a broken leg and a busted nose and something else. It wasn't a broken leg, it wasn't a busted nose, and it was... They all hurt, but they weren't damaged, so that was worked up. EMS took care of that. And we're thankful for that. Some of the big things I have to talk to you about is replacement of vehicles. Our vehicles have not been replaced in several years. And so what you're doing is just letting them go down and down and down, and it could become pretty much useless. We have one over there now that transmission works part-time, and that needs to go. It's not including this, but it needs to go. In addition, the radios in the cars have never been updated in the last four years, I'm aware of. They're not even capable of receiving fire and EMS, and they never were. A caveat to that was, one of our officers, Gerald Ordin, is just happened to be the chief, assistant chief of the constable of the fire department, and one of his members, who's Jen Marcelli, I think, please forgive me, Jen, is works the emergency management office. And through one of the grants, a portion of the proceeds had to go to the police, and thankfully, they were kind enough to include us in it. And what has happened, they were able to get us five portable radios that include fire and EMS so we can talk directly to them as we need it. In most cases, the owner's car, it was on scene, the fire EMS is there. It's just the nature of the beast. And so it becomes very helpful. It did not cost us anything, and I certainly wanna thank the Office of Emergency Management for thinking of us and allow us to get in on that grant. It helps, and the radios worked real well. As far as the cars go, as you know, the cost of everything has gone up. I know that we have budgeted for one car about fifty-one thousand dollars. The cost of those cars, since we purchased them, is probably... I would say probably ten or fifteen percent more. The current car that someone can fit into is... One of them that we're looking at is a Dodge Durango. I looked at it twenty-twenty-two. It had police stuff in it, which is what you have to mimic. The problem of that is, is that the cars that we currently have are just setting their... They're not running up miles, they're running up idle time. And that certainly takes away the length of the engine. So what I'd like to do, I'm hoping I tried to call them twice. I got no answer. It's a company out of Buffalo, New York. They have two... The last thing we knew, they had two Durangos, one marked and one unmarked. The marked... One marked unit was approximately sixty-one thousand nine hundred dollars. The unmarked unit is approximately forty, I believe, forty-nine, nine thousand. We wouldn't put a radio in the car. We would take the lights out of the car that I'm currently driving. The car I'm currently driving, it belongs to the PD. Number one, none of my people will use it. They can't get in it. I'm a pretty good guy, side guy, and it's like peeling a banana and getting into it, and it doesn't ride all that well. But it would make an excellent car for someone who wants to buy it. It only has approximately thirty-four thousand miles on it, and it's a four-door, and it runs great. So I would like to ask permission to at least extend a proposal to buy a car, if we can find it, if it's not gone, for the marked unit and an unmarked unit. And with the purpose of the unmarked unit, of course, to hopefully to go towards the patrol's duties when they don't wanna be seen. That I can tell you, I don't have in my budget, I had no, no, I didn't have anything to do with that. So we need to start building the fleet, rebuilding the fleet, and then you need to keep revisiting that. And I, quite frankly, don't care if it's a Dodge, if it's a Chevy, it, number one, has to be big enough for someone to get into. And I got another gentleman that works for me, that's fairly large with all his equipment and his vest and everything. And he was able to get into the car and sit into it comfortably. So it's something like an SUV that we need to look at. If that vehicle's gone, we're in a company, I believe it's called Rapid Nine Eleven out of Pennsylvania, they do business, they also take state contract, both of these are in state contract. So I, I would like to ask permission to go ahead and attempt to get this. I don't think, even if I said I could take it today, we could probably couldn't get here until after next year, so. That's number one, and number two is manpower. We are so understated, it's, it's incredibly difficult to work. Our guys are doing great work, they are working and, and doing as much as you could ask anyone to do. They're changing shifts, they're moving days and they're, they're trying to, we're trying to allow them to have their time off, which they'll have, have the right to have coming. And the point of it is, we just don't have anybody to go around. When J.J. Youngs was the chief, when he came here, he had eight patrol officers and himself. When I came here, I have three patrol officers and myself. And we are more busier now than we ever were. And I can tell you, if you don't think the drugs are here, I, I don't know which section you've been living in, but it hasn't been quite right. In the last two weeks, we have Narcan, the same guy twice. Quite frankly, he's gonna make it if he keeps continuing to using these drugs and.
What do you mean by make it?
Huh?
What do you mean by make it?
You're gonna die.
Oh, okay, that's what I thought you meant.
I mean, they were, he wasn't even conscious, they were unconscious. The last time it took about forty, no, it was more than that, it was about a minute and forty seconds. And he popped up like a target and then he didn't want anything to do with us, he wanted nothing to do with us. And of course, we couldn't search his car, they're, they're, they have rights and once they're away, they can express their displeasure. And they weren't happy with search and rescue, so they signed off, they left, but this is occurring regularly. We have lots of drugs in this village, we're not unique, we just do. But it takes manpower to work on that particular section and. First of all, I'd like to know what your thoughts are on, on the cars and the money for it and. I'd like to hire, permission to hire three new officers. To, to be very truthful with you, and it's something this board has to look at, you have to improve the wages for the officers that are working as well as introduction because I have serious reservations if you're gonna get many or any applicants. If I was to hire today, it would take approximately three months to be able to bring that person on the force if in fact, they were trained. So believing that they probably are not gonna be trained, if you bring them on, it takes about eight to ten months of training before they can become police officers. So you're looking at down the road a year and we have to start somewheres and this is a process. Providing we get that many applicants. I know I've thrown a lot of information at you, but that's, that's all I'm asking.
When we talk, when we talk, chief, about hiring new employees. My, my biggest concern is, yes, they gotta be trained and I get that. My biggest concern is, when we train these gentlemen, or ladies, we're going to need to build in something so that we don't train them, only to have them leave. Where maybe there's a back-ended side to salary as they stay. I've seen that happen too many times and I blame, I don't blame them if, if you don't protect yourself because everybody for themselves. The other thing that I'd like to say about the salaries is, I'm not against paying a fair wage to any of these gentlemen. My, or, or ladies again, my question is, and I haven't reviewed it, and maybe you have, I know that our health insurers, we pay, we pay a lot more than the county. In other words, we pay like eighty-five percent, the county pays sixty-five to seventy. So I'm trying to do that, what I'm trying to say is, I wanna do that, I wanna be able to, I, I'm a big proponent of we need to provide police protection twenty-four seven. I'm fully in favor of that, but I wanna be able to do it. Back when I was with the Marias, we had eight, I agree, when J.J. was here. And my, my theory was, for me, it was costing three hundred dollars a year. Now, one could argue that's a terrible price, my argument was, that's a cup of coffee a day, that's a hell of a deal. So I'm behind all that and I'm, I'm not against any of it and I think we need to work with Pam to figure out, well, whatever the board wants, to, to make this work. Because I want a police department in this village, I've always wanted a police department in this village.
It's, it's an issue that is not just to our department, it is an issue in every department that we go, that we're working with. Retention is another big issue, it is as high up as the state police and the amount of money they get and God bless them for getting what they've got. The sheriff's office, same way, the PD, it, it is, we have to develop a program that's gonna keep someone here and, and for the life of their career, hopefully. And, and that is another big issue, but there's not everybody that wants to step out, take the training and then take the chance of getting knifed or shot at every day. It's not one of my fun things to do and I suspect that anybody with no gratitude into that is not theirs as well. So first of all, I, I'd like to have, ask for consideration for, for me to go ahead to at least look into this and, and try to see what we can get. Starting with advertising with the police officers. There's an amount of time you have to set up the civil service and start the application, so I, I'd like permission to do that.
I just want to say one thing, Dan, when you were talking about training. There should be over there someplace in that office, we did come up with a policy a few years back that if we paid for all your training and you left before a certain number of years, you've had to pay a percentage of that back. And that was signed by the officers and they, there should be a copy of that policy over in the police department.
They're probably.
We did do that to try and protect us so we didn't train somebody and then six months or a year later, they went someplace else.
I, I think what you do is, I hear you, I don't like that idea. I think what you do is, if they've been here for so long, you give them the money on the backside versus, versus try to collect it from them after they've left and they, they chase them like a dope collector. Doesn't work too well.
I, I had thirty-seven years of law enforcement, I wanted to become a police officer and they won. I can tell you one, if you told me that I had to pay back for training and I had a better opportunity after I was training, I wouldn't come here, I would not bother to come here.
No, I agree, I say, I say that you say to them, if you stay here at the end of that amount of time, whatever it is, here's what you're gonna get from us.
Yeah, that, any and all those things are possible, but the biggest thing is, we have to do step one and you're gonna have permission to go ahead and ask for the advertising and, and, and see what we can get out there, that's, that's the biggest thing.
Where are we at right now, year-to-date with, because we passed the budget, so we'd have to figure out something. I'm assuming, based on the budget, we're probably under because you don't have been able to staff, so.
If, if it hasn't been taken out somewhere, so I, I haven't run those, I've been a little busy on the other side, I haven't run those numbers yet. Typically, what will happen, when positions are eliminated, they often are not refunded. Because if they were, we would have had lots of money, I don't know that and I'll have to talk to Pam about that. But that's usually what will happen, government thinking they'll save that money, well, eventually they don't save the money when you rehire them.
And we're still paying, right?
I need to look at getting officers to continue, I'm leaving the thirty-first of, of December. But I'm looking to solidify that department and, and for a long-term goal here. It certainly is needed, just enough work for, for everybody that's working there. But this is the only way that I can say to the people that we're trying to protect them and do the best we can. So I'd ask, you look at that and make your proposals, don't you?
I don't know if we can, right now, possibly when we find out with one case that we got out there, hopefully we'll wind down.
I'm not optimistic about that.
That may be a, a slot for an officer, but, so I don't, I guess my thought is, I don't think right now we could advertise for three, but I'm thinking maybe two.
Well, two's better than nothing, I'm not sure you'll get two, to be very truthful, but you don't know if you don't advertise.
I've had some texts from people that want to come to work here and I'm not gonna share obviously their names, but there's some people out there that would love to come here to work, so that's a good thing. We'll find out when you run the ad if they're truly, truly in the, of course, one of them I think wants to be the chief, so.
It's up to the board.
December thirty-first, if they can, if they wish.
Advertising.
I'll make a motion to get permission to advertise for two positions.
Give me a second?
One second.
Home favorite?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Getting us back up to your cars?
Yep, that's what I'm doing.
Now, are we talking one or two? Because I think, I think we probably can do one, but I don't think we can do two.
Well, then the one car.
I don't know what the budget is.
I don't think there's.
I doubt if there's.
I don't think there's sixty thousand in there, but I'm thinking there's forty-some thousand for a car.
Well, you're not gonna get a car for less than sixty thousand.
Well, no, but I'm saying there's been put in reserves already towards.
One, one of the things that I would recommend is that, at the same time, you, you would sell the vehicle that I'm currently driving. And get one that the patrols can actually use for patrol. I mean, if they've gotta get into a vehicle and crawl over it like a, a rug, you're not gonna drive it, that's exactly what's happening. And, and I'd suggest that you would sell it on the open market, whatever that market would bear, but certainly it's a good car with that amount of mileage, I would say. And then that, that would go back to help defer the costs.
That's what, seventeen?
It's two thousand seventeen Ford, yep.
How many can we, should we sell that car?
I think the school just sold one for around nine or ten thousand, that was on Auctions International. I think theirs was a seventeen, two, I think, or eight, which is.
But the idea is, is that when you sell the car, the money goes into a, a second car.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. I made a motion to sell the car.
Well, we're gonna have to sell really because we got the one with a bad transmission.
Yeah, I don't.
That's the one that should really go first.
I don't think you're gonna get much for a car with a bad transmission.
Well, it might just be a torque converter, nobody wants to put the money in.
Believe me, when you put it in, you know, it's lost its.
That's a twenty sixteen, I believe, isn't it? It's an older one, it's one of the oldest ones.
For all purposes, it might go for other uses, but it wouldn't be practical and it's not practical for police work for sure. But the idea would be, we would sell that as well.
Send up to board, what you're gonna do.
I don't know where we're at budget-wise.
Budget-wise, I think we could sneak out one vehicle, but we're not gonna sneak out two. Because we, we've got, well, I don't have the budget, I know we, two years running, we put money aside in reserves for a new vehicle. And actually, we wanted to buy a new vehicle two years ago and then back in twenty nineteen, we were scheduled to buy one and COVID hit. And we were trying to keep the fleet the same, that's why there's so many Fords over there, because we can get local service on them. And all of a sudden, Ford didn't have any state contracts because we had the same problem with F-250s and 350s at the DPW.
And you're looking at twelve to fourteen thousand for the chief's car.
So if the money is there for one, I say go for one to start with, I'll make that motion, I mean, you, I don't know what's to debate, I mean. Charlie, I think what you wanna do is make the motion that we put the two cars up on Auction International, see what we can get so that we can figure out where we're headed to get the car that we're talking about, am I correct?
We need a car, we gotta, we gotta do to get it.
You're eliminating a vehicle, you gotta understand, you're eliminating one of the, of the vehicles of the fleet.
We're disposing of two vehicles and only getting one.
And then we gotta, we gotta come up with a situation, boy, because we need, you know, our budget here runs from June to, from the first to May thirtieth? Or is it June thirtieth to June first, to May thirtieth?
Well, instead of, I could only suggest this, if you're not, if you're gonna only get one car, don't sell this car, it has its uses.
No, that's what I'm saying, sell the SUV, get rid of that.
Yeah, sell the one that doesn't work and get that, keep this one and it sounds like you're pretty close to getting the money for, you have the money somewheres for a marked unit. If that's all we can get, then that's all we can get.
For right now.
For right now.
But the other thing is, say you've declared that one surplus, put it on Auctions International. Yet if it's not what you think you want for, you don't have to let it go. You know, just, say your figures were ten thousand, you only got a six thousand dollar bid, you don't have to let it go for six thousand.
As best you can, yeah.
Well, given the other one with the bad. Let's just not figure anything because you don't know what you're gonna get, probably not much, so don't even figure that in the equation, just buy a vehicle. You can still put it up for surplus, but don't figure that into the equation of the new vehicle. Just go for the new vehicle, period, because you're probably not gonna get much out of that.
Why don't we put it this way, why don't we make a motion to give the chief permission to buy one vehicle after we get a chance to go over the budget tomorrow and see exactly what we do have? That way we.
My, my problem with that is, and I'm not so sure, is I'm not too late, they don't have many twenty-twenty-threes hanging in the lots right now.
It's gonna get worse.
I, I'm sure it is and, and especially I called up, I called up today hoping that I could firm that up and, and I could not, so. If in fact, that is not available out there, we'll look for another one similar to it to be able to get that.
But it sounds to me like we really don't have a choice, we have to replace one vehicle.
Right.
One does not work.
Yeah, that's why.
Whether we, whether we sell it, get anything for it or not, doesn't really matter, we have to replace it.
That's why Chuck made the motion.
I was told to.
And I, and I gladly second that motion.
So what was the motion?
That we give the chief permission to purchase.
One vehicle. To start with, I mean, then if you got a budget for more next year in the budgeting process, you gotta go for that, I mean.
All in favor?
Aye.
You take the chief?
Just an FYI, probably as y'all know, we are at a hub here in Village Roble to several routes that go north. And recently, in Messina, they've announced that they were going to purchase or build a hydrogen plant there. And several of the routes that come down through here, that go from there to here, come through this bill. All good things come to one location and we're in. There was a lot of concern from my part about safety issues on transportation as well as being a part of the counterterrorism zone meeting, zone eight. I had some concerns about that with the transportation of the hydrogen. So I was up there to the meeting with CTC and that was discussed with Air Products. And I was very satisfied with, with the information that they provided for us, their safety record. And I do have contact information for the security of Global as well as a, a member of the Air Products team. And I was satisfied with that, that hopefully we don't have to worry about a big bang coming through our village. And their safety record is really quite, quite good. And we also discussed some things that were not public. And we also discussed some things that were not public, but, uh, equated towards people who were trying to do mass destruction with similar things, and one of their trucks in a different state, and, uh, they weren't successful, so that's good. On September fifteenth, we had the night out at Fairground, there were several agencies there, uh, state police that were there, the sheriff's office was there, members, uh, there were, uh, were members of NIVL, that was the sponsor and agency of that, uh, the, uh, Village Police provided, they had two people there to do child ID, and, uh, they were very well-received, uh, as well as going over to the football game, uh, that night, and everyone there was, was wonderful, of course. The concern was of what happened in my account the week before. The same officers, all we had, turned around and started working again in the morning at six o'clock for the cream cheese vessel. We were fortunate, the sheriff's office were, were able to give us some help. Uh, the DPW, they, they did a good job, they were allowed, allowed us to, uh, use their signage, and we put them up in the morning and took them down in the afternoon. The County Highway Department, who, uh, thank goodness is proactive with us about acting with certain people, and they furnished us with four dump trucks, log dump trucks, which we put across the roadway to ensure the safety of the people in there in case there were people that were not happy. And it usually would be somebody come out of the area. Traffic went really well, we thought, and, uh, I know that there's some talk by peoples about moving the, um, event out of the middle of Laval. I'm sure that they're gonna have to look at that next year due to signage and due to, uh, certain restrictions with the state DOT, but that's, that's an animal you can slay later on, not right now. One thing I just really wanna make sure that everyone is aware, uh, it's fine to be able to help people, but in the case of, when you put someone in a homeless shelter, if you look at the responsibilities of the police department and what it did in the city a while ago, and it caused a lot of them to spend a lot of manpower and a lot of hours to protect the safety of those people in those areas. And unfortunately, there are innocent people that are really good, that are just down in their luck, and they're there. Unfortunately with that, there's a larger number of people that attend there that just use it as a place to go and to perpetrate crimes, let's put it that way. That's just something for future reference, um, if we're gonna build, there are some growing pains that we all have to look at, and that's, that's one of them.
And here's the issue with that. I think a lot of this happens because we have a Village Police Department, and they know this, so they put things close to us because of that, social services, and in the meantime, I'll get on my soapbox again, and I think it's time that the county recognizes that, and if this is all gonna happen, we need some of that sales tax revenue that we don't see.
Yeah, that's, that's pay grade above mine.
But I, but I'm, I'm just throwing that there, and I get what you're saying, Sheriff, uh, Chief.
The, the deal of it is, is I understand why they wanna put, uh, the homeless people close to social services, because of other services running, that makes sense.
Yep.
The issue of that is, in various in devil, wherever you place people, you have to have at least some kind of control, and, believe it or not, that if it's on outer, say, St. Street or by the jail, that is in the Village of Laval. And so, I guess you can probably see where my thought process is. I'm just looking for the future, that's all I'm saying, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I'm just saying there are issues that come with it, for those people who make those decisions, God bless you, do the best you can, and will live with those, whatever decisions you do, but it's, it is at least somewhat troublesome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions?
I just wanna clarify on your, on the motion to buy the, go ahead and purchase the one vehicle, are you including, um, declaring the other car surplus that, is that all part of the motion?
I think we showed yes.
And that was a two thousand sixteen?
The one that's inoperable.
No, you're not gonna sell that, that's not the one you're gonna sell, you're gonna sell the one that don't work. You're gonna keep the gray one, so that if they guys, if they, you have a special detail, they can use it as a banana, at least it has a, a minimal use right now, but if you get rid of that, then you got nothing but marked units there.
Yeah, I guess that's...
One year's the one you're selling.
The one, I think it's a two thousand sixteen Ford.
The gray car is a two thousand seventeen Ford, four thousand...
Keeping that.
That's the one you're keeping.
Keeping that one.
Right, the other one, I think, is a two thousand sixteen Ford.
Explorer, isn't it?
Explorer, yes.
Perhaps, yes.
One with a bad transmission.
Well, I've talked with John, who worked with DPW, and he thinks it's a torque converter, but, at the time, they were talking a little over seven hundred bucks for torque converters, we figured, as a car we were gonna get rid of anyway, why put seven hundred dollars in them?
Chief, you want me to go, stretch your legs? Thank you, thank you.
Is that okay, Pam? Okay.
Superintendent?
Um, in your packets, you saw from Auctions International, the stuff that we had put on the surplus. Just ask permission to sell that, with the eight hundred and thirty-five dollars that we make off it, that can go towards police department's floor.
There you go.
It's a fifteen hundred dollar bill, though.
There you go. I'll make a motion, we grant that permission?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hone. Capital future plan, eh?
Yeah, we, I discussed that again with Paul this morning, and, and it's obvious, after Chief Kavalk speaking, we need a list of all capital equipment, we have it in the village, we need to develop that, and, uh, that doesn't include just vehicles, but fixed equipment, and we need to prioritize the ear of all that, it needs to be done. Hopefully, as we get towards fall, we can do more of that, and I think probably I'll ask Sheriff, Chief Kavalk to, to update our complete list of vehicles, and I'd like Mr. Denas to do the same thing, and then we can sit down and start working on that, because it needs to be done. Classic examples right here tonight.
Personnel, how many have you had, how many updates?
Uh, a couple of things, we've got applications for chief of police, I think, five of them, right? And some, the clerk isn't expired yet, right?
The clerk, they got until Friday to get, and after Friday, so...
So, as far as the chief of police, we will be in the next couple of weeks doing some interviews, probably, and do that, and I'd like to, uh, request a executive session for personnel wage issues.
Okay. Finance? Ladies and fire department?
I think, there is one more thing I'd like to bring up, we discussed the, uh, pointing up of the building at the firehouse, and gentleman that they would consider using doesn't carry insurance. This is the same gentleman that we used to point up the old building we were in when I was mayor. What we did was, we put him on payroll, so that he had to work his comp while that was being done. And I think that's something we need to look at, because that building on the south side is really in a deteriorating factor, or, and it needs to be pointed up. And we needed to determine and discuss with the fire department, I, I don't think it's gonna cost a lot, but it's gotta be done. And it's our building, so financially, we're, we're responsible for it, we own it, and, uh, it's gotta be done, so I, I'm, and moving forward, because we're probably gonna get back to spring, right? Or would you think it should be done now?
I'm not, uh...
Neither am I.
I'm not an expert, I have no idea.
Maybe we need to talk about that in the next couple of weeks.
I mean, I know it's, it's definitely getting worse, and it's...
Well, we probably don't wanna freeze thaw on it again, though, so it needs to be done. So, if we're going to do that, and we're gonna have somebody do it that's, uh, doesn't carry insurance, we're going to need to put them on payroll, and we're gonna need to carry work with this compound, which is easy enough to do. When we did, you remember back, when we did the chimney back, uh, years and years ago? It's the same, I think it's the same individual.
Probably is, yeah.
Yeah.
Is it cement work that's gotta be done, Dan?